I'm calling it my first 7:29 for two minutes. Here we go. Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton zoning board. A place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in a municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the schedule to the Princeton Packet Town topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey Inc., a copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davids?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Valvanoings?
Here.
Ms. Chen? Ms. Perrin-Lambros?
Here.
Mr. Stein? Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the finding of facts. First one is case number Z-1919-764, 33 Lafayette Road, Block 5.01, Lot 10, in the R1 district. Everybody's, I believe, has received a copy of this resolution. Are there any comments, corrections? If none, somebody make a motion.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Second, we have a second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanoings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our first case this evening is a carryover from last week. It's 21 Battle Road. It has the case number Z-1919-744, 21 Battle Road, Block 38.01, Lot 10, in the R1 zone.
Board members, before we begin tonight with this application, there were two items I wanted to bring to your attention. I've reviewed the noticing for tonight. You remember, two months ago, you began the hearing on this application. During that hearing, there was a discussion about whether the application needed a lot with variance. The zoning officer concluded that it did, and the applicant indicated on the record that they were seeking that variance as well. You'll remember, this is a pre-existing lot, so the dimensions, area and lot width and depth are... were in existence prior to the zoning ordinances. The applicant was required to renotice because we could not give them a firm date for when this would be carried. A neighbor apparently has asked the zoning officer or raised the question of the lot with variance because it is not called out specifically in the noticing for tonight. I think the noticing has given the neighbors sufficient information about what is happening tonight. Also, the record of this hearing, which began two months ago, also makes clear that the applicant would be seeking the lot with variance for a pre-existing lot, and they told you two months ago that everything around it is developed, so essentially, the lot is what it is. Second thing is, our chairman has reviewed with me a question that he had. He has determined that the son of the applicant's architect works for a corporate client that he has. I don't believe that creates any personal or financial conflict, and that's what I've advised him. I've also consulted the applicant's attorney, who told me they have no issue with that as well. But we're putting this out here as well. If any board members have an issue or concern, this would be the time to raise it. If not, then I think I can swear in Mr. Bridger, and he can proceed with any comments he has. So, would that be acceptable for us to proceed? Yes? Okay. And Mr. Bridger will swear you in for tonight. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. So, this case was originally heard at the August meeting. The applicant decided to come back and look at their design. They've made some changes. They revised the architectural plans. The new plans eliminate the covered walkway, which led from the main house to the detached garage accessory apartment at the rear of the property. And the plans also eliminate the second-floor bedroom over the most rear garage, which allows for the utilization of a 300-square-foot exclusion from floor-area ratio. That is applicable to garages that are located behind the house and do not exceed 15 feet in height. This reduced the floor area by the 300 square feet, and the elimination of the walkway also reduced floor area and impervious coverage. So there's still a D variance, which is the FAR. The size of the house has been reduced from 7,438 square feet to 6,333 square feet. The max floor-area ratio for this property is 5,631 square feet, and the proposed is 6,333 square feet, so that's a D variance. And as you're aware, that needs to be affirmed by five members of the board, and the proof is basically the applicant should address how the added FAR is... fits on the site. And there's a lot-width variance. One 25 lot-width is required, 100 feet is existing. There's also a lot-area variance for the secondary residence, which in this zone requires a 25% greater lot area. The minimum lot size would be 25,000 square feet, and the existing lot is 22,525, so that variance is still in effect. The height to setback variance remains. The requirement is 1.5 to 1. The proposed is 3.3 to 1, and the impervious coverage has been reduced as well. The maximum allowed for this size of lot is 29%. The prior approval, or not approval, but proposal had 35.3%, and now it's been reduced to 31.3, and that was achieved by the elimination of that covered walkway and a patio adjacent to, I guess, on the left side of the house, adjacent to what's known as Jenny's Den on the floor plans. I just note that there's still a fireplace that looks like it would want a patio out there. The fireplace opens up onto the patio area, so maybe the applicant should address that. And there's the length of facade facing the street variance, Section 17A, 403. Two B limits the facade to 45 feet, and this is the same as it was at the last hearing. It's 46.83. And then the final variance is for the drive... distance between driveway openings on a U-shaped driveway lot. Again, it's that same ordinance, 17A, 403, J3A, which was the neighborhood character ordinance. It officially allows U-shaped driveways, but does require that there be a minimum 50 foot between the two openings of the legs of the driveway. So the 50-foot is required. The proposed is 37. And just to recap, the applicant, for the bulk variances other than the D variances, seeking a C2 variance. And that's a synopsis of the revised application. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I have one. Does the secondary residence portion of the ordinance require the secondary residence and the main residence to be connected?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Not in the township, or in the borough.
Okay, that's right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you remember, from two months ago, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee here for the applicant, we went back and did a lot of digging and looking and feel that we heard your comments last month. We reduced the request considerably for the floor-area variance and the impervious coverage, removing more than 1,100 square feet of floor area from the project and almost 4% of the requested coverage as well. We've got our architect here tonight to go through kind of side by side so you could see the effect of that, you know, where it's come from, where we were able to pull things out to make this closer to conforming project, and our planner here as well to talk about the impact of those changes to the variance request, the smaller request, and we'll do our best to... I know there's a lot of interest in this project this month, but we'll do our best to keep the testimony short. We've got a full record here on what Derek went through as the bulk variances, the U-shaped driveway request of the distance doesn't change, the lot-size variance for the secondary residence is essentially the same but for these changes. We're really talking about tonight the making the project smaller, you know, how much smaller we were able to make it and how much less coverage we're requesting tonight. So with that, I'm going to introduce again Mr. Peter Dorn, our architect, to my left, your right. You can have him sworn in.
Mr. Dorn, if you'd raise your hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Excuse me one second. I saw the line at the podium, so I assume there are neighbors, there may be some neighbors here who want to speak. Everybody will get an opportunity to speak. The applicant will present their case first, and after that, then we'll call for comments from the audience, and everybody who wants to make a comment will be more than welcome to do that. Okay.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Dorn was accepted as an expert last time architect, so if we could just proceed that way.
We're fine with that.
Thank you. My apologies, and we have, like we had last time, one slideshow deck that I'd like to have marked as our exhibit this evening.
So we'll make this, I think, last week was day one, so this is day two.
Thank you. The pages are numbered, and we'll work off of this this evening. So looking at page two, if you could take the board through the changes that were made for this project.
Sure, okay. Well, obviously, the one on the left is what we originally proposed, and if you look at the one on the left about where the arrow comes down, you can see that there is a balustrade, and that's where the breezeway went through. That's been eliminated. You can also see that above the far-right garage door, that area, the volume of space that was occupied in the original has been reduced substantially so that the new roof over the far-right garage does not exceed 15 feet, and we were able to reduce the FAR considerably there.
So that both reduces the bulk of the building, removes actual livable space that was above that garage bay, and then is able to take advantage of the neighborhood character ordinances preference that garages stick out behind the rear of the home?
Yes. The second floor has four bedrooms, and the client has three children, and when we get to the floor plans, you'll see that none of the bedrooms are really that big. They're pretty modest, I think, by standard sizes, but I think it fits what they need as a family. It's their... defines their family.
So looking to slide number three, tell us what these profiles are.
Okay, this is the flip side of that, and this is where you can see where the breezeway... it was a really nice breezeway with gabled roofs, and it linked the house garage to the carriage house in the back, and that has been removed. And again, to the right, you can also see again where that roof over the garage was dropped down, and that volume of space was eliminated. Okay, it's the rear and the front. The front really doesn't change. It's the same, same as we proposed before, but the rear, you can see that now to the left of the chimney and to the right of the carriage house, right below the dove coat, you can see that there's a standing seam roof, yeah, right to the right of there, and you can... so that's where that was reduced. Sure, yeah, sure. Okay, no problem. Happy to.
Maybe just repeat that last part. So the change on this slide, on the right, you could see what?
Well, on the right, you can see where the, above the garage, exactly, that volume of space was reduced and dropped down, and we created a hip roof there with a standing seam roof. Okay, on this slide, again, here, you can see on the top where it says proposed, prior proposed, the breezeway was eliminated, the right-angle breezeway was eliminated, and so was the terrace where the... on the left side of the house.
Mr. Bridger had mentioned in his opening testimony that, you know, the fireplace situation there. Can you maybe just take us through how that works now?
Well, it's... when you build a masonry, a true masonry chimney, which this is, it doesn't really... okay. When you build a masonry chimney like this, the extra firebox doesn't really cost a lot, and it's a nice feature, and if the fact that they either have hardscape or lawn doesn't really matter, they can still have, you know, Adirondack chairs or any kind of chairs out there that they want, and so we didn't see a real need to take it out. Again, the cost for an extra firebox is really very little compared to the cost of a totally exposed masonry stone chimney. Okay, here, again, this is the second floor where the breezeway roof is gone, and you can see the reduction in the second-floor bedroom area. And the copper roof replaces the living space that had existed previously.
So I'm kind of X-ing in here in red, that new roof, that's living space above that garage bay that had been removed in this proposal and is now less than 15 feet?
That's correct. It is less than 15 feet, and that entire area was removed from any habitable space that previously was designed.
And the trade-off was that in terms of bedrooms or design?
The bedroom, yeah, we eliminated the bedroom, and we totally redesigned the second floor so that we could still accommodate their four children and give them bathrooms. They're all adults, but they're all local or fairly local, and they get together quite often, so that was important to them. And you could see by the size of the rooms, they're really not that large.
Then finally here, this kind of mirrors that, but maybe you can point out where the changes here are.
Again, where the arrows are, the terrace was eliminated in the back-left corner, and also the breezeway was eliminated, the connecting breezeway.
So that, from a coverage standpoint, that represents the step-back in coverage that was requested, down from 35.3% down to 31.4%.
Yes, yes.
This next slide, we've got the revised... the changes from last time in terms of variances. On the left, it's the bulk table from our original application, and on the right, the new bulk table. The other variances stay the same, but we have circled the coverage and the floor area to show the reductions from 32.6% floor-area ratio down to the now-requested 28.1%. More, you know, a more than 4% reduction there, and then a nearly 2.5% reduction from coverage.
That's correct.
Does anyone on the board have questions for our architect?
No.
All right, thank you. With that, I'd like to bring back our planner, Beth McManus.
Good evening, folks.
If we could have Elizabeth signed in, sworn in.
Yes. Ma'am, if you'd raise your hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? I do. Thank you.
Now, the board will remember extensive testimony from last time, and I'm not going to ask Elizabeth to repeat much of it, but what I am interested in her sharing is the effect on these reductions onto her prior testimony about especially the D variance.
So good evening, everybody. As Mr. Kennedy said, I'm not going to reiterate quite all the testimony, but I do want to focus in on the two changes that are shown in this slide, the changes to the bulk table. And these two changes are, of course, the reduction in the maximum impervious cover, so the reduced maximum impervious cover proposed on the site and therefore the reduced relief that we're requesting, and then similarly, the reduced floor-area ratio, or FAR, that's being proposed and therefore requested. These changes, as I'm sure folks know, came about from our last hearing in really trying to understand the board's concerns about the size of the building and how it may or may not be compatible with the neighborhood. And so our applicant, our client, has worked together with the architect to try to scale down the size of the building to continue to make it a, you know, a nice residence, of course, but also for the purposes of this hearing, to try to bring it down in size and bulk so that it feels more like the neighborhood in response to your concerns, and then also from the perspective of impervious cover, of course, has a smaller environmental impact to the site and to the neighborhood. So with that, let me start with the FAR variance, if you will. As I said, we've made a... I think we've made a pretty significant change. So for this particular site or the zone, we're permitted to have 25%. The last time we were here, we requested 32.6%, so 7.6% above that which Princeton permits. And I'm very pleased to say that we're now down at 28.1% compared to 25%. So we've reduced the request by 4.5%, and now we're just 3% over that which is permitted. So when we think about FAR and when we think about the criteria that's necessary, what we... the context is really how does the additional FAR, how does the additional floor area fit on the particular property, and can this particular property accommodate any problems or impacts that may arise from it? So in this case, from the larger building from which is permitted. And so in doing that, we look, we have to look at what those impacts are, and I went through all of this at the last hearing, but if you'll allow me to just summarize some of that testimony to maybe bring it back to the forefront. So as I said, we look at FAR as a really useful tool to regulate building mass and building bulk, you know, in addition to all of the other typical controls that Princeton and other communities apply. And so we've done, we've designed the building, we're requesting the FAR, and thinking about this in terms of trying to create a building that can be accommodated on the site, and more so than just literally fitting on the property, but trying to create a building... look to the lot plan. Yeah. So trying to create a building that fits on the property in a way that's aesthetically appealing, the way that fits the character in terms of the, perhaps, the architectural style, but really in terms of FAR for the scale and the size of buildings in the neighborhood. And so as you'll recall from testimony, we did that in part through careful architectural design to ensure that we're not proposing a, in an extreme, a big boring box, but to create a really appealing-looking home and one that would be... that would fit within the character and the style of the neighborhood. We also did that by orienting the home long ways, if you will, along the length of the property as a... so if you look at the plan before you, you can see that the building is aligned predominantly along the length of the lot rather than through the width of the lot. And we do this in part to help conceal some of that building bulk and to ensure that the building doesn't quite feel as large as it is from the street. And as part of that, in addition to just simply how the house itself is laid out, we've also done that by pushing some of these... the accessory building, the garage, to the rear of the property behind the existing home so that we're able to further cut down on the appearance of building mass and building bulk. And of course, I just want to remind folks that we're... that we are in fact partially screened from some of the neighboring use... neighboring properties by some of the existing trees on the lots. So ultimately, what does this mean for... sorry, never mind. What does this mean for the neighborhood? How do we compare to the neighborhood, especially now, as opposed to the last time I was here? So if you recall, we had gone through a bit of a neighborhood study that my office had conducted to try to compare the size and the FAR of homes in the surrounding area to that which is currently proposed. The last time I was here, I think I had to testify to you guys that there were no other homes in our neighborhood that exceeded the FAR of that which we were proposing. Based on the changes that we've made, I can now say that we are within the range of what exists in the neighborhood as defined by the study area map shown on your screen. So right now, we have a total of... there are 35 homes in this neighborhood study, of which six of them have FAR that exceeds that which is currently proposed, and so that amounts to about 17% of the homes in our neighborhood that have FAR that's larger than the proposed 32 points... excuse me, 28.1%. Additionally, we also have some homes in the surrounding area in terms of their floor area that exceeds that which is currently proposed as well. So before, I believe I had testified that there were about four homes in the neighborhood that have FAR, excuse me, floor areas, so just simply building area that exceeded that which is currently proposed, and it's now increased to, I believe, eight. And so we are more squarely within the center range of the neighborhood at 20% of homes that exceed the area. And so now I feel a bit more confident that we're proposing a home along with the... all the associated site improvements that are more fitting and more consistent, more literally consistent with the neighborhood as I look at the numbers. And so that's really the changes to the testimony regarding the positive criteria for the FAR. In terms of the negative criteria, I think much of the same testimony still applies, although the case is a bit stronger in the sense that when we talk about what is that substantial... is there substantial detriment to the public good? Is there substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance? And the last time I was here, I testified that, no, I didn't think there was because of the character of the neighborhood and how we fit in there, and additionally, I didn't think there was substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. Now with these changes to the FAR, I can say that, you know, even more so. We are squarely within the neighborhood range at 17 and 20% respectively for FAR and floor area, and I continue to think that we can work within the intent of your master plan and your zoning ordinance by creating a home here that is appealing in its appearance and consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And so that's our FAR. We, of course, have one more variance that I wanted to highlight the changes to, and that's, of course, the impervious cover. This is a C variance, and... technical difficulties. That's a C variance, and... we are... okay, that's fine. So our impervious cover is required to not exceed 29%. Last time I was here, I talked to you about our proposal at 33.9%, and I'm pleased to say that we've reduced this down to 31.4%. So... So, we've had a reduction in impervious cover, proposed impervious cover, by 2.5%, and now we're just, 2.4%, thank you, over the, that which is permitted in the district. So, the testimony I provided the last time, I do think continues to apply. In there, I had talked about, and I'll go through this again, but how it is that we met the C variance criteria, and I continue to think that we do meet the C variance criteria, although expectedly, I think the argument is a bit stronger now that the deviation is pretty significantly reduced as compared to where we were before. And so, as I talked about before, I thought this was a C2 variance, meaning that it's a flexible C variance or benefits versus detriments variance, depending on your preferred terminology, and that we would be advancing purpose I of the MLU well to promote a desirable visual environment, and I said that because for a variety of reasons, but in part because we're eliminating an unkept property by promoting its revitalization and bringing it back into full productive use and a more appealing nature. And as part of that comes the additional impervious coverage from the amendments to the building, the foundation amendments, to pedestrian areas, patios, and of course, the driveway as well. I also testified how there was no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan, the negative criteria for this particular variance, and I continue to find that to be the case. In part, the lack of substantial detriment to the public good comes because we have a plan to handle all of the impacts from impervious cover, and those impacts are typically twofold in a residential use. One is simple appearance. What is the character of a site that has essentially too much paved surfaces or too much building area causing that impervious cover? And what are the stormwater management or the flooding impacts from it? And so, we have a plan here that's really strived, especially between the last meeting and this meeting, to create a plan that has, that is desirable, that does not have an appearance or a feel from the street, from the public way, that is too big, too massive, too bulky. And additionally, we've created a plan to handle that stormwater management. If you remember, for example, rain garden proposal to help mitigate any of that additional or excess, I should say, impervious cover. And so, as I said, I find that the criteria and the proofs that I put on for the C2 variance continue to apply, except that the argument, quite honestly, is a bit stronger because we've been able to have a substantial reduction in the amount of relief that's been requested.
Just one quick follow-up. So, those are the variances that are essentially benefited from the reduction.
Yes.
There was extensive testimony on the other C variances. It's the lot area, the width, the building height, the setback ratio, the U-shaped driveway, and the length of the uninterrupted, this is the articulation part of the new code. Just to ask you if you put on the record, does any of this make any of those worse?
No, it does not.
It just makes it?
It only strengthens, strengthens the support for them.
Thank you. If anyone has, from the board, has questions for our planner?
I have a couple of questions. The 17% impervious coverage
Oh.
And the 20%, the 17% of the houses in the area
The FAR in the
And 20% of the houses in the area have floor area ratios exceeding the requirement. Were any of those granted by variance, or were those prior non-conformings?
Mr. Chairman, I would love to be able to give you an answer, but I'm afraid to say I cannot. I don't have the history on those individual homes. That information was gathered from GIS or tax data rather than polling.
I don't seem to, I mean, I've been on the board for a while, and I don't seem to remember any in that area that
I mean, I was in the borough since 2001. I don't recall any borough applications for that relief, and since 2012 or '13, I don't recall any in the township for FAR.
So, I mean, we could just make a rough assumption that those were prior non-conforming uses?
That may well, that may well be the case, but even if they weren't, as I'm sure all of you and your professionals well know, they don't, they would not set a precedent that I would be able to definitively rely upon. Instead, I'm trying to cite the FAR and the floor area, not to try to say, well, you granted it once, so you should grant it again, you should grant it again, but rather just to say, you know, we're consistent with the character of the neighborhood. You know, we're trying to create a home that's a bit smaller and a little bit more in keeping with what you see along Battle Road and some of the surrounding streets.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I had a question. Again, on the floor area ratio exceptions, you found, I think it was 17% exceeded that which you wish. How many exceeded any of the existing ordinance?
I can, I can give you that figure if you give me one moment, just to count up. There are, of the 35, there are an additional two homes that exceed an FAR of 25% and one more that is at 25%.
Okay, did you do the same analysis for the impervious exceptions?
For the floor area or for impervious?
Oh, I'm switching from floor area to impervious.
I don't have the figures on impervious cover throughout the neighborhood.
Okay.
If there are no other questions from the board, I would like to reserve perhaps till after we hear from some of the neighbors in case there's any follow-up testimony and for a summary, but beyond that, that concludes our case in chief.
Okay. I do have one question for your architect that I forgot to ask. Thank you. I believe I mentioned in the last hearing, I had a question on the height to setback ratio on the, I guess it'd be the south side of the property. So, that didn't change. I mean, that's been, that's still the same 3.3 to 1 as opposed to the 1.5 to 1.
Yes.
Okay.
And perhaps just one quick follow-up for the architect. That matches the height to setback of the existing home that's on the lot now?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Although I believe that the, this portion of it may match the setback, but I think this is, the newer home is longer along that side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
I have a question, since you're there.
Sure.
Was, can I assume no thought was given to making any changes in the driveway, in the circular driveway, relative to trying to reduce the impervious coverage?
Well, I mean, that was one of the things that we spoke, I spoke to the, our clients about from the very beginning. That was one of the things that they really thought was important to do, and it seems as though, it was one of the things that was very important to our client, and that's something that we designed from the get-go, and so it remains.
One other thing I'll add to that. We did look at the gain in impervious coverage. It would be a very long driveway, and there would need to be a hammerhead or some kind of backout feature done, so that would not remove as much impervious coverage as one would immediately think. The figures from our engineer were about 525 feet would come back if you removed the U shape but still had to maintain enough to back up, and then you'd be kind of left with an orphaned front drive or front entrance. So, if you were to build a sidewalk, not a sidewalk, but a walkway, then, you know, to the front door, you'd add in back another 225 feet, so it would be about a net change of 300 feet if it went because of the things you'd have to build back in to back in and get out, as well as, you know, a place to get to the front door.
Right. Thanks.
Okay. Are you done?
Yes. So, with that then, we'll yield to public comment and any summary after.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board for any of the witnesses so far?
I guess I'll ask a question. You've been silent on it. The secondary residence and the square footed size of the lot deficiency, do you have anything to say about that?
That's, I guess I can bring our planner back up. The, nothing has changed in the variance testimony for that. We attempted to reduce the floor area and the coverage, but the, I think the planner's testimony about the need for that and the reason why that may fit in a C variance scenario is really unchanged with the reduction of floor area.
Okay.
Okay. I guess at this time, we'll open it up to the public. I would ask that, whatever order you're coming up in, please identify your name, identify yourself, give your address, and then be sworn by our attorney. Seem like there are a lot of people here, so the only thing I would ask, everybody will get an opportunity to speak. If you're basically just reiterating someone else's comments, you know, you can come up and say, I agree with previous comments or whatever, but just, I just want to make sure we get a chance to hear everybody. Thank you.
I guess I'm first. Let me adjust this. Thank you. I have to be sworn in?
You do, but first, your name and address, please.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Carolyn Healy, 25 Springdale Road.
And Ms. Healy, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Thank you for hearing me speak. Can you hear me speak? Okay. My name is Carolyn Healy, and I live with my husband and our two daughters at 25 Springdale Road within 200 feet of 21 Battle Road. We first moved to Princeton 21 years ago. We had to move twice for my husband's work, but we always came back to Princeton. We did so because of our great friends and because of the amazing heritage and wonderful character of our town. I thank you, the zoning board, for your service and passion in maintaining the unique aspects of our town. It has made Princeton consistently one of the best small towns in America. In addition, I have never testified in front of a town board or any board, so this is new for me and hard. I'm a little nervous, and so I'm going to read here. I'm not a lawyer, a planner, or an architect. I'm a concerned resident of Princeton and a neighbor who lives close to 21 Battle. I felt compelled to take action after receiving the certified legal notice in the mail on Saturday, October 12th. I went to the zoning office three days after receiving the notice when the zoning office opened after the Columbus Day holiday to try to learn more about these variance requests. And it was at the town zoning office that I learned that there was actually a prior zoning board meeting on these multiple variances requests on August 28th. And for some reason, we, my husband and I, we didn't receive it, plus many of our neighbors did not receive it. Officially, by the way, there's 13 neighbors within 200 feet of 21 Battle Road. After learning more about each variance, I then watched the two-hour, 20-minute video recording of the meeting, and I learned, and as I learned and listened, the testimony I heard in the video did not make sense to me. I didn't agree with the arguments put forward, so I felt I needed to respond. To start, it appears from the video that there was virtually no neighbors present because we didn't really know about it, this possibly giving the impression that the neighboring residents were positive on this project and not opposing the requests for the multiple variances, and actually, nothing could be further from the truth. There are 23 neighbors here tonight. I don't know, we'll stand at some point, hopefully. Nothing could be, there are 23 neighbors here present tonight, all against granting these multiple variances. There are also a dozen more neighbors who could not attend but are opposing the granting of these variances as well. As again, I want to be clear, we are not against the applicants, we are against the application. We welcome the applicants to the neighborhood and look forward to having them be positive members of our wonderful community. And as I talk about the variance requests, I just want to say I'm really talking about, based off of the current proposal tonight, because that's what I received when I went to the, I received the memo for what's being proposed tonight. So, I'm not really talking about changes from prior because I wasn't involved with it at all then, I didn't have knowledge of it. So, the impact arguments were really the same then as now with one small change that I heard tonight. The FAR, the applicant's testimony in August asserted there was no precedent for large houses on the neighborhood, suggesting it was not common to have a house far in excess of what is prescribed by the zoning requirements, and three specific houses were called out, but it wasn't really in the testimony mentioned that these houses are on lot sizes of over an acre. Two of those houses are in Mercer Street, an entirely different context, and they're 1.6 and 1.9 acre lots. The third house is on Battle Road. It's a double lot, and it's well under conforming. There's no meaningful analogy between these houses on lot sizes of over an acre to this 21 Battle 0.52. From there, I actually created, coincidentally, a list of 35 houses surrounding 21 Battle Road and recorded the lot size and square footage of each, and the lot on 21 Battle is conforming and not really unusual. In fact, there are 10 lots of exactly 0.52 acres immediately around 21 Battle. Currently, the largest sized house on a 0.52 acre lot is 4,000 square feet. So, an owner at that 21 Battle could build within code a house of 5,631 in size. They'd still be 1,600 square feet larger than any existing house on a 0.52 acres. So, without a variance, maxing out, you'd be 40% larger than any existing house on a 0.52 acre lot there, which there are many of. So, much was said at the hearing also about the character of the neighborhood will not be impacted by allowing these zoning variances, and I would say that it is precisely the existing FAR variances that actually creates and maintains the character of the neighborhood. The houses are all proportional to their lot size in a most elegant manner. This dictates the presence of our neighborhood, and it helps establish the character of the neighborhood. I did a lot size, square footage, a lot size analysis. I didn't come out with the numbers that were just presented a moment ago, so I, mine are different, so I can't speak to them, but I will say that it seems to have changed a little. I don't recall that being spoken at at the first meeting, and I think we just heard that maybe there were six. I didn't find that, but six, in my opinion, fitting squarely in the middle, six out of 35, in my math mind, doesn't fit squarely in the middle. Lot area variance is the second one. The 21 Battle does not, the lot area variance for secondary residents, the 21 Battle does not meet the necessary size for secondary residents. Let's stay within our zoning ordinance. There's not a benefit to the community at all. The proposed plans are already over square footage and need a variance. It's not in compliance, and then the newly created garage and second-floor residence in the back is very visible to the street, and especially from the back and to the many neighbors in the back. This is a second-floor, you know, garage, a two-story garage building. That is as tall, basically, as the house itself. Height to setback from the August recording, the testimony repeatedly contend that the height to setback variance request is okay because the variance condition exists today on one side of the house, and because the variance problem is mitigated with new architecture and is creating a pleasing visual for neighbors. Maybe the front of the footprint is, the front of the house, the footprint, is similar, but the back of the proposed house is not. This is a new house being built. It's not the same house. The existing house has 2,361 square feet. The proposed house is 6,333. That is much, much more volume, cubic volume, being spread out there in space, and it is mostly all visible from all angles, certainly in the back and to the neighbors in the back. Also, there has been this idea that has, was mentioned quite a bit in the testimony the last meeting and tonight, this idea of a pleasing visual. The idea as a support and benefit, the idea that a variance should be granted The idea as a support and benefit, the idea that a variance should be granted because the problem is mitigated with new architecture and creating a pleasing visual was brought up several times on the video, including height to setback testimony. And this is concerning. Conflating architectural aesthetics with land use requirements is inappropriate to me and to our knowledge unsupported by zoning-type regulations. Moreover, a pleasing visual is highly subjective and should not be used as an argument to secure land use variances. The two just don't seem connected to me. And speaking on behalf of the neighbors, we don't, we wouldn't maybe agree to saying visual pleasure justifies traumatic variances. Impervious coverage, again, the testimony asserted a benefit associated with this variance request is, again, the pleasing and mitigated visual, and that, for me, is even more alarming than using it in the height to setback argument, given the critical importance of impervious coverage issues in our community. Pleasing aesthetics, again, that's in the eye of the beholder, have no impact on environmental issues that this regulation is designed to address. Making something pretty is not an answer, nor should it give permission to break these critical codes. Simple compliance with the generous FAR allowance and lot area variance makes this issue go away. This is also an issue that we believe that neighbors should have a particularly important voice, as we quite literally share the drainage and runoff conditions of our immediate neighborhood. And we can, and we can expect the severity of storms and intense rainfalls to only I just also want to add on this that Princeton has worked very hard on the impervious coverage issue, educating our community, educating our children for future generations on this issue. We are New Jersey leaders. I myself, I really don't know that I knew what impervious coverage was seven, eight years ago, but I do now because I live in this town, and I know about it, I understand it, I care about it, I respect it. So we take it seriously in Princeton. We can't afford to go backwards. This is a dangerous precedent and wholly unnecessary. Length of street-facing facade, all the other houses on Battle Road are within this code. It is already tight, the proposal, on the sides, and if it's a truly diminutive request, as said in the testimony, then just lengthen, just lessen the width of the street-facing facade by the 1.83 feet. It should be able to be done if we're cutting down square footage. The U-shaped driveway opening setback between drives, again, I am not sure why a U-shaped driveway is even being proposed in the first place if it cannot conform to the zoning laws. It is an unnecessary addition that will only exacerbate the violation of impervious coverage code. Okay, summary. Each one of these variance requests carries a precedent. People of all ages want to move to Princeton because of the incredible character and beauty. We rely on our town zoning codes to preserve the character of our beloved neighborhood. The proposed plans would break character and create concerning precedent. Many people who live here now and in the past have improved their houses and properties beautifully while abiding to our Princeton zoning codes. The codes are here for a reason. Let's not make decisions that could undermine the effectiveness of these codes moving forward. And very importantly, these same codes were in effect when the applicants purchased the property over two years ago. It was, and it is, all transparent. In the video recording of the meeting, the applicant's witnesses referred to hardship often, but in listening to the two hours and 20 minutes to try to understand and follow the rationale, I could not. The hardship seems to come from having to secure variances for what is desired, and that's a process, not a hardship, as far as I know. It is fairly conforming. One desire of more square footage above the FAR allowance triggers a variance request. Another separate desire for a second residence triggers yet another new variance request and only adds more to the FAR problem. And so, and so on, and so on, and it seems a slippery slope. The August hearing, much was said in testimony about how these many variances approvals will benefit the community. To be clear, speaking on behalf of the neighbors present here tonight, we see no communal benefit to the proposed plan. We would welcome the restoring of the existing house or replacing it with conforming home. But the current proposal would instead be a detriment to the neighborhood as a whole as it creates a very dense lot that would be apparent to all and certainly to the immediate surrounding neighbors. Furthermore, this density is quite inconsistent with the density presentation of all the 35 houses around 21 Battle, which all sit elegantly in proportion to their lot size. The existing FAR compliance in the neighborhood is central to our beloved neighborhood character, and it has protected it and kept it alive for us the last, for nearly 100 years now. We oppose chipping away at this community character through variance. So our town leaders, such as yourselves, put careful thought into our zoning rules. Why make an exception here when there is ample allowance under existing zoning code for a more gracious, for a more-than-gracious home, and it will only message more and more people to not take our zoning seriously? We ask the board tonight to deny the issuance of all variances, very especially the FAR, the lot variance for the secondary residence, height to setback, and impervious for sure. To be clear, we are not asking the board to create new zoning here. We are asking to affirm our existing zoning. And as I say, thank you to the board for allowing me to speak tonight. I do want to say one last thing, and that is finally, that everything I presented here is not personal, it's reflective of our town zoning. But I would now like to say something personal. I want to welcome the Innochias to our neighborhood. We have not met, but I want to personally welcome you to the neighborhood and wish you much goodwill. I believe you will love Princeton. I know that you will love our very special neighborhood, and I believe you will soon understand and join with your neighbors in protecting this incredible haven of a neighborhood while we are lucky enough to live here. So thank you and welcome.
Hi, my name is Felicia Spitz. I live at 5 Hazlet Avenue in the same neighborhood.
And Ms. Spitz, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Derek, I haven't worked with you in quite some time, but I built a couple houses in the neighborhood, one of which I live in, and I learned in very excruciating and painful detail the floor area ratio, the height to setback, the imaginary 45-degree angle in the air that you can't put a dormer window or anything like that through. And I actually brought an email exchange that Derek and I had back in February of 2015, a mere four years ago. I stopped in today to try and see if you had time to look at the original numbers and determine if the unfinished storage space was counted the first time around. I'd like to discuss the best options for moving forward before I submit drawings. We are looking at a difference of one-half of 1%. So it's very close. Here are the numbers. And I proceed to give him numbers. We were short 124 square feet. And Derek's suggestion at the time was, "Come and listen to the cases that are before the planning board, because what you're asking for is a hardship." What I wanted was a shaded outdoor space. What I have now is a pergola, because that's all we could have, because we were short 124 square feet. I have a massive underground stormwater management system. I am the only house on my street that does not suffer flooding when we get those, let me knock wood, those horrible rainstorms, because I didn't want to be the person that moved in the neighborhood and wrecked everyone else because we put in something that wasn't I really was not happy with Derek at the time, and I came and sat at a meeting, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh, he's absolutely right. It's a rounding error. It was 20.542%." And listening to the cases that were before you at that time, I thought, "How can I possibly, in good conscience, as a future member of this neighborhood, go in and make a fuss about this 124 square feet? How can I? It's not a hardship." So we have a pergola in our backyard. It's filthy all the time. Every time we go outside, I clean outside so I can sit in my pergola because 124 square feet. I'm telling you all this because I don't understand how this even happened, that this conversation, this application is on the table. Back in the day, there was swift rejections, I remember, because I got them. How did this get in front of us, and how did we not get notified in the neighborhood? I don't understand that process, because when I was building, there was a much higher standard to what I had to do and who I had to communicate with and how this whole process worked. There were no surprises by any of the neighbors, because we notified everybody. So I don't know what's happened between February of 2015 and today, but I would ask all of you good, kind volunteers who give up your nights to sit in these meetings to please go back to your 2015 selves and reject this application. It is unnecessary to have a house of this size and magnitude and environmental impact go in this neighborhood. A 4,000-square-foot house or a 5,000-square-foot is plenty big enough for four children. I have six children. We fit in my house. They're all grown, five of them are between 23 and 34. I have a 10-year-old and two dogs, and we all fit, and we have a smaller lot, it's .51. Please reject this proposal, ask for a proposal that's truly in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and let's go back to our old selves, the way it used to be, when you were rejecting one-half of 1% of floor area ratio. Thank you. Good night.
Yeah, we had the certified receipts and certified lists, so it was checked.
Board members, the state land use law requires the applicant to send out a notice to owners within 200 feet by certified mail. What happens is the post office simply delivers a little slip to you to say you have a certified letter waiting for you. Once the applicant provides proof through certified mailing slips stamped by the post office that they have deposited them with the U.S. Post Office, they have done what they're obligated to do. If the post office now, if you're not getting delivery, that's very unfortunate, but what the law requires the applicant to do is simply give them to the post office and say, "I've paid for certified, you've stamped each slip for each name and address," to show that they have done this. And they give them this receipt, and that is what they submit to us.
Could we see a list of who supposedly got notice? Because none of us got any notice.
You can, if you want to come up to see.
Sure.
Okay. Sir, will you have your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Alan Belannan. I live at 62 Battle Road for over 40 years.
And sir, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
It will be.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to first to thank the hard-working people who sit on the zoning board of adjustment and know that they're dedicated to preserving the uniqueness of our town by only granting variances for exceptional circumstances. People who buy million-dollar properties are intelligent enough to know that the current lot is undersized in width for a new construction. They purchase with the risk that they may need to live with the current structure on the property. That being said, if you choose to level and start afresh, should the town grant hardship variance for a hardship that is self-inflicted? I'm on the fence on this. My current house on 62 Battle Road is the same lot size as 22. I am the highest FAR. I am the 4,040-square-foot house that was referenced by the first speaker. Okay, I've lived there for a long time, and that's a lot of house that I live in on a half an acre. The owners of 21 Battle first proposed was seeking a variance for a house approximately 7,333 square foot. And today, seek variances for a house that's 6,300 square foot. That's very gutsy. That's 40% bigger than the house that I have right now, which is a lot of house on that lot. If the width nonconformances waived, they could still build without an FAR exemption for a house that's 5,600, roughly 5,630 square feet. I've listened for over two hours to the testimony on August 28, and I almost fell off my chair when the architect claimed that he can design a new house that meets the zoning, but you, meaning the people on this board, wouldn't like it, okay? I'm surprised that the new owners didn't claim that the hardship was the resistance of the architect who refused to use his skills to stay in the permitted space. I couldn't help think that maybe the owner should consider who is in fact designing the house. Here's the biggest rub, however, okay? It's ridiculous that a house being put on a lot that's under width and size could then, for single dwelling, to then request variances to build a second dwelling on the same property, okay? I strongly object to the variance, other than possibly to relieve from the width, okay? And even then, I'm on the fence, okay? Why have zoning requirements if they are to be ignored, okay? Now, that being said, lastly, I'm not against new neighbors in the neighborhood, and I welcome them. I'm against having them build what they want to build. Thank you.
My name is Yamiles Levy. I am on 55 Battle Road. I am testifying as a private citizen, not in representation of any of the organizations I belong to.
Understood. And ma'am, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to share that this is a very tough situation for our family because the neighbors of Battle Road and all of the Springdale Institute area are genuinely welcoming and inclusive, and that pattern is something that we would like to continue with any new neighbors, including the Innochias. What's truly fascinating about living here in this neighborhood is that we all implicitly share a common sentiment. We all feel privileged to live in one of the most beautiful and peaceful areas in the world with a great historic character, significance. There are many factors that contribute to the character of our street Battle Road. There is, of course, the historic aspect, most of these houses that were built in the early 1900s. When I first moved here, I interviewed several contractors, and one of them suggested that we demolish the house. "It's cheaper to build new," he said. Well, if I lived in a different town or neighborhood, I would have probably considered this, but we're in Princeton. And the feeling that I got that here in Princeton is that we preserve, we take care, we give back. Many of our neighbors have renovated, conforming with the zoning laws. We also feel a duty beyond the law to maintain, to preserve this wonderful historical town. We also feel a duty beyond the law to maintain, to preserve this wonderful historical town. On Battle Road, there are the London Plain trees. They provide character and have become a symbol not only of the Springdale Institute area but of the entire town. Images of this road with its London Plains are used on websites and magazines. Locals and visitors walk down this road to enjoy the beauty of the London Plains. Imagine if we all demolished our homes, built circular driveways, over 6,000-square-feet homes, multiple parking garages, because we are looking at four areas to put cars in in a town where we're looking to reduce our carbon emissions, right? So, take notes of that. A two-story second home, and then we took down dozens of trees. The owners of 21 Battle have taken down numerous trees, and in their current application, they're requesting the removal of an additional 14 trees, including potentially, I'm afraid, some of the London Plains, we're afraid, but we're not sure. But anyway, it's something to look into. We would certainly achieve, if we did that, we would certainly achieve a new look, but certainly not the one why we all moved to this neighborhood. Dear members of the zoning board, thanks for hearing us tonight, but would you allow us all to do that? Would you allow, if you allow one new neighbor, you could potentially have to allow the rest of us, and that would definitely compromise the character of our neighborhood. So, by going back to the London Plains, they constitute one of the most valuable assets in this neighborhood, and for that reason, a group of neighbors works closely with the municipality to make sure that the trees get replanted in the necessary spots, and privately, we have fundraised to make sure that the trees are fertilized every other year. We're also very careful to not unnecessarily cut trees in our properties, especially because the Emerald Ashbor will take down many trees in Princeton anyway. But the owners of 21 have already taken down so many, and they have a deadline to replant, and I don't know that they have met the deadline or will meet it within, I think there's a deadline of a year to do that replanting and re-landscaping. Well, the trees bring an extra benefit, and it is the carbon capture achieved in an environment that is every day more and more filled with greenhouse gas emissions. This leads me to talk about more about the environmental impact of this new construction. We have heard about the rain barrels or something that they're implementing to mitigate flooding, and there are other impacts of increasing impervious coverage that are not necessarily flooding. There is the contamination of the waters that comes from the waters being in touch with the new impervious coverages and the substances that are released from that. There are multiple other impacts that affect the habitats of the multiple smaller species that live and even the trees. And so, that is not just the water management that they're proposing, it's so ridiculous to have to build a big structure and then to have to mitigate when we're trying to mitigate smaller structures, it just doesn't make sense. So, at Battle Road, we feel entrusted with the mission that's beyond legal, and it's a moral duty to take care of this wonderful street, and we hope that you, as we're making history tonight, decide to embrace our commitment to keeping it with the wonderful character and the wonderful looks that we've always had on that street, and thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Karen Zumbel, and I live on 58 Battle Road.
And ma'am, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak after Yamileh did because I actually, I have pictures of mine. I wanted to speak after Yamileh spoke because I have pictures of the beautiful London Plains in front of their property, like before they started being torn down, and I'd like to show you the pictures, like, to prevent any kind of further disturbance.
Ma'am, did you take these pictures yourself?
This was from Google Maps.
Okay, and you live on the street?
I live on that.
And your representation is that's an accurate depiction, correct?
It was in 2017.
Okay.
And I also have pictures of the trees that were in front of their property before they started cutting them all down, and these are from the Realtor website, and they're posted right now, I just pulled them off, they just had to change them. And this is my representation, these were accurate in 2017 also. And now I have pictures of what the property looks like right now with all the trees cut off.
Did you take that picture?
I took these.
Okay.
I took these yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. So, that's objector three.
It's my understanding, like Yamileh said, that they were granted a permit in November of 2017 to cut down eight trees and to replant five trees within a year, and it is my testimony that five trees were not replanted within a year, because I live on Battle Road, and I believe I would have noticed that, but it's just my visual testimony. They might have done it without me seeing it. And I don't understand, I wasn't here in the beginning, unfortunately, so I don't know what additional trees they want to take down, but I really hope that they are not permitted to take down any more additional trees. I'd also like now to talk about the historical importance of Battle Road itself. Battle Road derived its name from the fact that Battle Road is the quickest route between the Princeton Battlefield and Nassau Hall, where British troops were garrisoned during the Battle of Princeton. In fact, it's said during the Battle of Princeton, American soldiers marched up Battle Road towards Nassau Hall and fired on their own building because it housed the British troops. One of the cannonballs that was fired on Nassau Hall flew through the window in the faculty room and decapitated King George's portrait. The cannonball was said to come from a gun in the artillery company commanded by Alexander Hamilton, who had been rejected by Princeton when he first came to the colonies. The result of the battle that went through our Battle Road was decisive patriot victory on January 3rd, 1777, and Nassau Hall was retaken by the Americans. The more modern history of Battle Road began in 1902, when the first house was built by the noted mathematician Oswald Beblen and his wife on 58 Battle Road, which is where I live with my family. Oswald Beblen, as you know, was the first mathematician and first member of the Institute for Advanced Study. He also is notable because he selected Albert Einstein to be the institute's second appointment after he met Einstein in the U.S. on one of Einstein's frequent trips abroad. Oswald Beblen was famous not only for bringing Einstein over from Europe, but many other important mathematicians who populated both the institute and Princeton University mathematics departments. The historical stone that was used by Oswald Beblen and his wife to build our house is the same historic Pennsylvania field stone that was used by the university to construct many of its important historical structures on campus. Our house on 58 Battle is only one of many historical homes on Battle. So, I am just, I'm only telling you this story about our historic home to let you know that we care about the history of Battle Road, and we just want everything to be in, not out of character, since it's such an important block. And certainly, the London Plains are extremely important to our general welfare and happiness on that block. I also would like to talk about the circular driveway because I really hope that you do not grant the variance for that circular driveway. There are, such a driveway is not necessary for a single-family home. There are 15 houses on our block on Battle Road that do not have circular driveways, and I do not feel like I need one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of committee, my name is Paul Bersh, and I live at 59 Battle Road.
And sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Members of committee, just to be a brief, I certainly agree with all of the prior points of the other speakers. We certainly do oppose the variances as requested. We live and have lived, my family and I, for about six years on Battle Road, it's a wonderful road, and we live in a half-acre lot in a house of about 3,500 square feet, so one of the smaller houses on the street. We did some renovations to the property and always kept well within the required code. So, again, just for brevity, we absolutely oppose the application for all the prior stated reasons. Thank you very much.
Rob McKeon, I live at 33 Springdale Road.
And sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Just want to make two points for emphasis. I live with my wife Anne and our two daughters at 33 Springdale Road, which is just around the corner, so our lot is technically two down from 21 Battle. We moved there in 2017. Our house is one of the lots with a .52 acre. Our house is 3,600 square feet. We renovated it for six months, never requested a variance. It was extremely important to us to keep the integrity of the house. It was presented to us by our architect, and it was basically a nonstarter to request any variances. We're perfectly happy with it, we're thrilled to be there. We have two kids that live in the backyard that is, basically faces the backyard of 21 Battle. Just want to emphasize that the two-story private apartment would really loom over our yard in a way that would really be detrimental to us, as proposed. We understand that they need somewhere to park, that seems egregious to us. And then, just lastly, the importance of the impervious surfaces, the backyards of these houses on Battle and on Springdale, I mean, it's essentially one big backyard. Anything that is compromised, you know, it's not, the stormwater runoff does not adhere to property lines, it's all shared, and it's extremely important to us to keep that within the permitted allowance. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Robert Spentum-Gaffa, we've lived at 57 Battle Road with our family for over 10 years now.
And sir, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
After all the previous testimony, I think I can be pretty brief, I agree with all of that, more or less, so I can be brief, clear, maybe a little bit stark. Given the multiple substantial deviations from the zoning rules, this proposal that is in front of you makes a bit of a mockery of the zoning process. I think there has been no intent, despite all the testimony you've heard from the architects, no intent or real effort to fit the design of the house to the zoning rules or to fit it into our neighborhood. Basically, the applicants are trying to see what they can get away with. I understand now that the original proposal went even further, so with the council, they're probably arguing they already made concessions and are looking for a compromise. I hope the board doesn't fall for that. The zoning rules and laws exist for a reason and should not be subject to some form of force-treading. In summary, after creating the eyesore of an abandoned and unkept property in our neighborhood for a little over two years now, the applicants are trying to create a new type of eyesore. I can only hope the board sees this proposal for what it is and rejects it outright. Thank you.
My name is Robert Owen, I live at 103 Battle Road Circle with my wife.
Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I do. I live in the Battle Road-Springdale neighborhood, emphasis on the neighborhood, and I spend a lot of time in front of planning boards and similar, and I come from a family of architects, mostly out on Long Island. Very surprised to see what I've seen here today, I don't know why I'm here, frankly. When the architect was asked about the driveway, which is, doesn't fit, it's out of zone, his only response was, "It was very important to my clients." The entire evening was a comparison against the baseline of a 7,300-square-foot house. The board did not insist on comparisons against the 5,600 line in the sand. If the applicants had originally proposed a 9,000-square-foot house, they would have had a fantastic argument today. Look at the compromise they're making. I don't know why we, I don't know why I'm here. I don't know why I'm here. The house should conform, we should stay within the zoning ordinance, or else you're giving a green light to builders to walk into this magnificent neighborhood, target a house, knock it down, come before the board, and build a Marriott. Thank you.
My husband and I renovated an existing house at 68 Battle Road, 68 Battle.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I also didn't hear about the meeting in August. In fact, sometime in the summer, I noticed some activity around 21 Battle, we were all wondering what was going on there, and I got a little nervous, so I went down to the zoning board to find out what was going on, and I said, "Gee, I hope they don't have any permits out for tearing this pretty building down." And they said, "Let me look it up," and then they looked up and they came back and they said, "Oh, no, they just put in a permit to add an addition in the back and expand the garage." So, I was like, "Oh, okay, that sounds all right." So, I went home and didn't even think about it until Carolyn Healy told me about this meeting today, so I had no idea about the one in August, and I don't know, I must have been in there shortly before that, so I don't know how all this happened. But anyway, when my husband and I first entertained a move to Princeton with our young daughter in 2005, we were drawn to the institute area, and in particular, to Battle Road, by its stately London Plain trees and gracious homes. What especially impressed us was the unique character of each individual home and the collective harmony of all the dwellings bound together by scale and positioning. With their relative size and respectful setback from the street, no one house overshadows another. Currently, we're deeply disturbed that a lovely historic home, sitting quietly among its neighbors for perhaps 100 years, may be demolished. Even in its neglected state, this old house reminds us that character and connection to a surrounding community of homes plays no small part in making our Princeton neighborhood a very special place. Granted, Battle Road does not have historic designation, but it nonetheless deserves to be recognized as part of a classic Princeton neighborhood, and as such, any change or addition to dwellings should, with very rare exception, conform with existing zoning codes. No matter how beautiful, a new house that's uncharacteristically large for its lot, towers over its neighbors, and protrudes in front of all the other houses on the block will ruin the character and charm of our cherished neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Anne Han, and I live at 53 Battle Road.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I fully support everything that my neighbors have said. We did an extensive renovation of our home in 2015 and 16, and we did not require any variances, and it was difficult, very difficult, to maintain the character of our very, very old home built in 1890 and actually moved to Battle Road when it was called Morningside Avenue. And we take great pride in our home and our street and are so grateful to be And we take great pride in our home and our street and are so grateful to be able to be there every single day. And we just really hope that the board rejects the request for all of these variances because they're not necessary to build something that would be gracious and beautiful and fit in with our neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Nick Garrison. I live at 11 Ober Road.
And sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
The point of the variance is not important so much for this house, but for the entire neighborhood. I would point out that this neighborhood is in a neighborhood that is rapidly changing. Many of the homes that are existing are lived in by elder residents that are looking to move at some point. And the precedent that you set tonight will be a very important one. Two houses down from me, the grapevine in our neighborhood is that the house that was purchased a while ago is going to be torn down and a new house is going to be built. So what you do tonight is going to have consequences for the next conversation that we're all going to have. And I ask you to think very hard about that and whether or not there's any hardship on a perfectly rectangular lot in the middle of town that has no easements, no real restrictions for how one would build on it according to variances. You have no purview over character and style. You can't listen to those arguments because you're not aesthetically oriented as board. You don't make those decisions. But you can make decisions on variances, and I urge you to hold your ground and do the right thing. Thank you.
My wife and I live on 15 Springdale Road.
Sir, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
First, I just wanted to mention, we also didn't get a notification of this, the zoning variance.
I don't mean to interrupt you, sir, but I'm just going to point out, because the zoning officer has reminded me that, remember, the notices only go out to those within 200 feet. And that list is prepared in consultation with the zoning officer and the tax collector. So it may seem to you that you're very close to the house, but when it's measured on a map, if you're not within 200 feet, then you are not on the list for which the state law requires the applicant to give notice. They also do put a notice in the paper, but again, it's small print at the back of the packet. So if you like to look at legal notices, you'll see it. But frequently, you feel you're within 200 feet, but you're not. And that's why you don't get the notice.
How do they measure the 200 feet?
I'm going to let Mr. Bridger explain that.
It's a straight-line measurement off the tax map from the perimeter of the subject property.
Yeah. Yeah, we got a, we got notices.
The legal requirement for a single-family development is notice to neighbors within 200 feet. I mean, I realize the Institute has a long history of other issues that require that notice. Yes, ma'am.
200 feet from any point on our property to this property line?
From this property, a 200-foot line is drawn around, and any properties within that 200 feet are noticed.
That can't be right. I mean, we can see the backyard.
Well, I mean, we could check on the tax map tomorrow. I'm happy to, if you want to meet, we can look at it.
But anyway, it didn't happen. And I'd like to thank the neighbors who've spoken. I agree with everything that they've said. I just wanted to make one point. Our house is an older house. It's from the 1930s. And we've had some drainage issues, especially recently, they seem to be getting worse. And that has been affected by construction nearby. Increasingly, the coverage area, the impervious area, as is proposed here, which would be a very considerable increase from what is existing now. I think that was, there's a 2,000 or so square-foot house on there now, going up to six. That may cause us some problems with drainage. And for that reason, we ask you to hold to the, not allow a variance for this house, as well as all the other reasons that my neighbors have so eloquently stated. So, thank you for your attention.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Do you have any comments?
We do. If we could just have two minutes just to confer with our planner, there was quite a few things that were rattled through here that I'd like to have our architect and planner address, if that's...
Why don't we take a little break?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break?
Okay.
Excuse me, do you have something you want to say to the board?
I will let Mr. Kennedy explain further, but the applicant has asked if the board would allow this application to be further carried. They would like to consider the comments they've heard from the public tonight and have an opportunity to, should we say, more fully respond than they'll be able to do in the time period we have now. And I'll let Mr. Ryan continue.
Thank you. Not just to, two main things. One, yes, you know, we did the notice. We agree with Mr. Bridger and the analysis that it was done correctly. However, it's an unfortunate situation here, both for the applicant and the neighbors, that many of them just found out about this recently. That puts us all in a tough spot. That puts us all in a tough spot. While we complied with the notice requirements, there's a lot of new information coming out today and information that the applicant would like to take back and revise the project to address.
Does anybody, Michael?
I don't have an objection. I would ask that the applicant consider meeting with the neighbors before they come back here and just to see if anything can get worked out with...
I think that's a good idea. You know, there are several buckets of variances here, some of which can be addressed very quickly, some of which require a back and forth and a balancing, so that may be a great idea, Mr. Ford.
I think that's an excellent idea. Anybody else?
May I make one comment? Would you consider going back and trying to build a house that's compliant?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Snyder. I think I heard, and I'll just repeat what I, if the question was, would we just build a compliant house? We'd like to revise it to get closer to that. If we were just going to do that, we would just abandon the application. So the idea is to work within the application. And maybe at the end of the day, the house would be, it'll never be completely compliant because no 100-foot lot in that neighborhood is compliant with zoning and will require that variance alone. So...
Wait, let him finish, please.
So it may not be possible for any home to be built on this lot because it's 100-foot...
The issue is, the issue is that you'd like to take some time...
Yes.
And you'd ask for a continuance.
Yes.
I don't think there's anybody here that would object to that. Excuse me, just one second. I don't think there's anybody on the board that would object to that. I think it's a good idea to speak with the neighbors and see if you can come to some agreement. Okay, one sec, yes.
I would just like to speak on behalf of the neighbors. This feels like it was very deliberately unsuccessful in terms of noticing the neighbors because nobody got any notice of the first meeting. So as long as they're going to email everybody on this list and let us know, so we're not relying on this notice system that didn't work, it was only chance that we all heard about this before tonight's meeting.
I'm not disagreeing. At the last hearing, I was kind of wondering why none of the neighbors showed up also.
Yeah.
But you know what? That's, we're done with that now. Obviously, there's some concern about noticing. The applicant has heard it. Our staff and council have heard it, so we'll deal with that one. I think it's a good idea that we possibly continue this, so we can see if we can come to some satisfactory resolution.
Thank you.
And on top of that, I will say, commit from the applicant, that, you know, technically, if dates certain are given, it's not required to renotice. Even if we were able to get a new date tonight, we will renotice regardless and make sure that information is out there.
Well, Mr. Kennedy, I mean, obviously, the state law requires you to send out these certified notices only to those within 200 feet. Beyond that, that would have to be voluntary on the part of the applicant. How far beyond that and how many other people get notice? Or whether you also send notice by first-class mail? Because I'm assuming most folks will get first-class mail. It's the certified mail that is proving to be an impediment. I'm not sure why the post office is having a difficulty with it, but, so I don't know what the position would be of the applicant. But again, it's those names within 200 feet. And I understand that's only 11, 12 people who are physically within 200 feet.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm just suggesting that if we can get Mrs. Carr, we can, those of the community who want to get notice, send our emails to him so that we can get a distribution list.
That's your call.
I want to be careful. We want to, I want to make sure enough people get notices and have it done in as easily and friendly way. I'm concerned a little bit that something might get dropped there if the neighbors would, I don't know if Derek or the town would accept requests and then we would notify folks.
I see a lot of heads shaking, like a lot of people shaking their head, saying like, no, no, no. I don't think it's our job to work with the applicants. Am I speaking on behalf of most of us? Can you please raise your hands? I think it is the board's job to deny the variances.
Excuse me, not to cut you off, but I think that's something that you, as the neighbors, and the applicant can talk about, how you want to come to some consensus.
For instance, when she went through the same process, she didn't have to talk to the neighbors at all. She just got denied and...
He does not have to talk to the neighbors. You don't have to talk to him. If he reaches out to you and you don't want to talk to him, don't talk to him. That's all it is. We're not forcing anybody to do anything.
Wait, excuse me, one second. You can come forward, but the applicant, the applicant has asked for a continuance so he can take...
I mean, is there any, anybody on the board have an issue with December 11?
All right, so, just for the information for everyone here, the application is continued to December 11, 7:30, same room. Those within 200 feet will get a certified notice again. I don't know if the applicant wants to consider also sending it out first-class mail, just...
We can, we can do that, that's not a... It's the certified mail that no one gets, that's expensive. It's the, the 55 cents is easy.
And, uh, in terms of an extension of time, uh, because we would want, depending on how this is, you know, develops in December, um, when is our, when's the January meeting? The reorg meeting, do we know? Well, we're not gonna reorganize, though, and we won't talk any until January.
Derek, when will, when will you require that, that things be resubmitted by?
At least three weeks before the hearing, you know?
So, that means, that means three weeks before, so that's gonna be the second week in November. Probably, right? Okay, so it's...
Mr. Kennedy, uh, what about an extension to the end of, uh, January 2020?
That's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. Is it okay if I say something? Yeah, thank you. Um, so, I just, I just wanted to comment on this, um, what is it called? Going forward, or second date? Continuance, thank you.
Continuance, yes.
Okay, so, I was about to say, I feel like I went to law school in preparation for this, but if I can't even come up with that word, I clearly didn't go that far. Uh, okay, so, I just want to talk about, um, you know, this, this word hardship comes up, and even though there are no hardship compliance here, um, this is a hardship for our, our neighborhood, the people, individuals, the time to, to come here, and just in trying to scramble in the last, um, basically eight days, nine days to prepare this, it's a hardship of time. I personally, and a group of us, have put a lot of time into deeply trying to understand what's going on. Also, we, you know, we don't have a lawyer, because we did ask around, and it was a starting price for testimony of, uh, planners, and it was just, it was, starting price was $7,000, and then that's building, yeah, then you bill from there. Um, this is, that's like straight hardship. Um, so, uh, I just would, you know, and, uh, I just would say that if we're going to go through this, I hope it's just, um, not kind of a wearing-down game, and I hope that we come back that is in compliance, um, in total compliance, you know? Um, so, there is, uh, you know, on the pieces that we talked about tonight, so, that's, that's what I really want to say about that, because it, it is a lot of hardship. You're talking about December, when, there's a lot of stuff going on then, with schools and families, and, um, to push it off again, so, it's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so, December 11th, resubmission three weeks prior. Thank you.
Did you want to change it to January?
Did you say December 11? The continuance. Did we say January or December? I thought it was December 11.
Yeah, hang on one second. Excuse me, can we, if you're talking, can you talk in the hallway, please, so we can continue our hearing? Excuse me. Thank you. Okay, all right. Um, we have four more hearings this evening. We are not required to hear any new testimony after 10:30, um, or start a new case, or have any discussion after 11 o'clock. I think, uh, we've talked about it, we want to try to see if we can get all, through all the hearings we have tonight. If it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer, but let's, let's give it a try here. Okay, the next, uh, the next case is Z-1919-750, 186 Birch Street, Block 6903, Lot 10, in the R9 Zone, the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. Oh, Birch, what said Birch Street here, it was Birch Avenue.
Yeah.
Oh, Birch Avenue is a whole different language.
Do you need to...
Do you have any?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Should I, yeah, do the memo?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I'll note for the record, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Uh, thank you. Um, the applicant's, Robert and Margaret Miller, are seeking a D4 floor area variance to permit the installation of a roof and skylights over an open interior courtyard. Um, property is located in the R9 Zone and subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, A246, 253, and 255 of the Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. Subject property is noncompliant with respect to the required lot area of 6,500 square feet. The lot area existing is 3,500, is noncompliant with the 40-foot lot width requirement, the existing is 35. And the house itself is noncompliant with a smaller side yard setback requirement of five feet, the existing is three feet. The smaller side yard setback requirement for the garage is also five feet, the existing is two feet. The rear yard setback for the garage is 15 feet, the existing is four feet. The floor area ratio permitted is 51.2 percent, that's proportional FAR due to the small lot size, or 1,792 square feet. The existing FAR is 56.8 percent, or 1,989 square feet. Uh, property is located within the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District and is subject to review by the Historic Preservation Review Committee, which did review the application on September 18th, 1990, and was supportive of the, uh, application and approved it without any conditions. There were numerous variances granted in 2006 to permit the construction of the existing single-family house and detached garage. Um, findings of fact should be attached to this, this memo. The existing house has a seven-and-a-half foot by 13.66 foot, or 103 square foot, open internal court, courtyard. The applicant has encountered standing water and drainage issues with his courtyard, and they propose to enclose this area with a roof and skylights. Um, the enclosure of this area increases the existing FAR in variances in pursuit to NJSA 40, colon, 55D, dash, 74, and a variance is required for FAR. The subject property complied with, um, the maximum proportional FAR when it was constructed. However, the FAR definition has been amended in the intervening years to count any area greater in height than 12 feet, um, twice, which was made when the existing, which made the existing FAR noncompliant, um, or the proposed FAR noncompliant, and, uh, I believe the garages were exempt to it at one time. Um, so, the proportional permitted FAR is 51.2, the existing is 56.8, and the proposal is 62.7, or 2,194. It's basically that 103 square feet increase. Um, while it's a D variance, as you're aware of, uh, the applicant should demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area, and not that the site is particularly suited for more intensive development. And it requires five affirmative votes out of seven. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I assume all the notices are in order and everything?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Please.
Uh, Mr. Bilastri, if you would raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And, I just have a couple of questions. You are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes, I am.
And your clients, Mr. and Mrs. Miller, are seated with you tonight. Are they going to testify as well?
I might say something.
You might? All right, well, why don't we...
If it's a...
All right, then why don't you both?
Swear to the oath?
Yes, raise your right hands, please. Um, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to, um, add a few comments to Derek's summary. Um, the first comment is that, I think, as Derek noted, the existing atrium, uh, creates a standing water issue, uh, and it's become a routine maintenance problem.
Excuse me, one second.
Yes.
You're testifying as an architect now, or just as the applicant?
I, as an archi-, well, um...
Well, I mean, we just have to qualify you as an architect.
I am an architect, yes.
You're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
You, have you testified before this board before?
Uh, not, not as an applicant.
Okay, as an architect?
As a neighbor and, on a different issue.
Okay, but you are registered in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, in addition to the, uh, maintenance issues, there's also a safety issue in the winter, where the standing water often freezes on that, on that, um, tiled, uh, atrium floor. Um, and additionally, um, because there's no roof on the atrium, and that's the primary entrance, um, they also have an issue where things are left, packages and stuff are left in that open atrium that get damaged. It's a little ambiguous, I think, as to where the entry to the house is, and how things are left there. So, they've actually resorted to having to put a sign in, under the covered portion of the entryway. Um, that's a slightly more mo-, uh, that's a more modest issue, uh, the primary issue is the maintenance issue and the safety issue for their kids there. Um, and furthermore, in terms of the impact of the, of the proposed skylights, um, the additional square footage we're requesting is completely on the interior of the existing structure. So, visibly, there's no increase in the, the visible bulk of the, of the existing dwelling. Um, all we're doing is putting a slope skylight that follows the slope of the existing roof, um, adjacent to it, and does not exceed the existing height of the building. So, there's no increase in the height of the building, there's no increase in the, um, impervious coverage, or the building footprint, um, that's all been built. Uh, all we're doing is asking for this skylight cap, and by the zoning definition, adding that roof is what creates the floor area.
Sure.
Um, it's, this is not an unenclosed porch, um, because of the way it's been constructed.
Penny, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say, uh, so, we moved into this, we've, um, I grew up in Pennington, so I'm from this area. We moved, um, into Princeton a few years ago, and into this home about a year and a half ago. Um, we have two small children, a five-year-old and a three-year-old boy, um, and we love the home and love the neighborhood, and we, like, we just want the home to be more, um, livable and less, have less maintenance issues. Uh, another, so, our two young children often rush out the front door. It's a slip, it's slippery when it's raining, and they have fallen, and I would hate for, you know, someone who, uh, is not a family member to fall, and I, I don't know, come, uh, you know, it would be dad if somebody who's not a family member were to fall. Um, our pipes also froze last year, uh, because of the exposed walls, um, so we hope that by putting a cap on this area, um, it would mitigate the drainage issues. Um, it's leaking into our basement as, as well. Uh, we have caulked it multiple times, we had a professional caulk it, I caulked it, and we also sealed it several times. It has not stopped the leak into the basement. Um, and, uh, I think that was, oh, and, um, just in terms of sustainability, um, putting a cap on this roof will, uh, decrease the, um, sort of exposure to both the cold and the heat, so, we anticipate that, um, we would actually be able to use less energy to heat and cool our home. Um, and the material that we have chosen for the skylight is, um, in fact, recycled, uh, material, I believe. Um, Carlo has more details on that.
Yeah, it's 95% recycled aluminum.
Okay.
Um, that was it. I just wanted to say my, um, a few things.
Okay, just, I just have a couple of questions, and we'll ask for the board. Um, you obviously didn't build the house, you bought it.
We, yes, we bought the house, it was already like this.
And you're not planning on adding any intermediate floors in that space?
No.
You're just gonna leave that?
No.
You're leaving the windows that are there in place?
Yes, yeah, we're, we don't plan on doing anything, um, to the interior space, we kind of just want it to be like an enclosed porch, basically.
So, you're just gonna cover it, put a new, uh, front entry door in there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any question?
I have a question. Because you have a basement, do you have a sump in the basement that you could essentially create a drain to get that water into the sump?
Uh, we do have a sump pump in the basement. It is, um, in the far corner of the basement, not near the, um, not near the porch, and it would also require us to, it's, it's not draining into the basement, it's leaking through, so we would have to, I think, reconstruct the porch with a drain, um, which would probably cost the same amount as...
Yeah, the, if I can clarify, the existing, um, atrium does not have a drain.
It just drains out the...
It's pitched to the stair. It's not a good design.
It's supposed to be pitched, but it was...
Yeah, it's pitched, and then actually, it's a steel structure under the, underneath that, part of the atrium has steel beams, and if you look in the basement, it's all exposed, water's getting into that steel structure.
It's not a great design.
It's not, it's not. Um, you know, I think the applicant's looking to, uh, find the most cost-effective and least impactful way to solve the problem. I mean, a temporary solution would be to retile, but I think the problem will come, continue.
Which, which actually doesn't solve the problem of the freezing pipes that we have, which I guess we could address another way by ripping out the walls and, um...
Or the slipping.
Insulating them.
The ice, ice issue.
Yes, or the ice issue, so...
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything?
I was going to, but no, I, I...
I'm sorry?
No. I'm fine.
Good. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay, all right. Anything in closing?
Um, no, I think that sums up the proposal.
Okay, all right. Comments from the board? I actually think it's a very good idea. I think the, uh, the open atrium is probably not the best situation in this part of the country, and I can appreciate the drainage issues you face, so, um, personally, I would recommend approval, so, if, um, somebody'd like to make a motion?
So, moved, I moved to approve it.
I'll second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Perron-Lambros?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you very much.
And thank you for your patience.
Okay. Okay, our next hearing will be, uh, 96 Fleming Way, Block 9701, Lot 65, Case Number Z-1919-750. Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I have a question. Because you have a basement, do you have a sump in the basement that you could essentially create a drain to get that water into the sump?
We do have a sump pump in the basement. It is in the far corner of the basement, not near the, not near the porch, and it would also require us to, it's, it's not draining into the basement, it's leaking through. So we would have to, I think, reconstruct the porch with a drain, which would probably cost the same amount as...
Yeah, if I can clarify, the existing atrium does not have a drain.
It just drains out the...
It's pitched to the stair. It's not a good design.
It's supposed to be pitched, but it was...
Yeah, it's pitched, and then actually, it's a steel structure underneath that. Part of the atrium has steel beams, and if you look in the basement, it's all exposed. Water's getting into that steel structure.
It's not a great design.
It's not, it's not. You know, I think the applicant's looking to find the most cost-effective and least impactful way to solve the problem. I mean, a temporary solution would be to retile, but I think the problem will continue.
Which, which actually doesn't solve the problem of the freezing pipes that we have, which I guess we could address another way by ripping out the walls and insulating them.
The ice issue.
Yes, or the ice issue, so.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything?
I was going to, but no, I, I...
I'm sorry?
No. I'm fine.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Okay, all right. Anything in closing?
No, I think that sums up the proposal.
Comments from the board? I actually think it's a very good idea. I think the, the open atrium is probably not the best situation in this part of the country, and I can appreciate the drainage issues you face, so personally, I would recommend approval. So if somebody'd like to make a motion?
So moved, I move to approve it.
I'll second.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Perron Lambros?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your patience.
Okay, our next hearing will be ninety-six Fleming Way, block ninety-seven oh one, lot sixty-five, case number Z nineteen nineteen dash seven five four.
Well, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
Derek?
Okay. Do I, do you have this?
I don't seem to have a copy. Oh, I did. Yeah, I just looked it up and see it. I did read it, I did see it. I don't know where my copy is, but it's mine. Okay, yeah, I had it, I'll wear it just. Thank you. Steve, should I start? Sorry about the delay. I apologize.
The applicant, Vahab Narayan, Narayan, excuse me, and Shalini Chaturavidi are the owners of ninety-six Fleming Way. They're seeking a D floor, floor area variance permit the enclosure of an existing open front entrance to create a foyer, an exception to the required floor area ratio. This property is also in a historic zone, and preservation plan approval is required. Properties located in the Washington Oaks Cluster are M-zone and subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in accordance with Sections ten B, two forty-six, two fifty-three, and two fifty-five of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject property is noncompliant with respect to the required maximum permitted FAR of twenty percent. The existing is twenty-three point eight. Subject properties located within the Stony Brook Historic Preservation District. Project was reviewed by the, and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission with no conditions. The applicant is proposing to enclose an approximately thirty-three square foot existing open front entryway, which will increase the existing degree of noncompliance regarding FAR as follows. Again, the permitted is twenty, the existing's twenty-three point eight, or thirty-five hundred and thirty-three square feet. They're going to twenty-four percent, or thirty-five point six six. And then this property did, again, comply with FAR, but due to ordinance changes in the interim since it was constructed, such as the elimination of the garage exclusion, it doesn't comply anymore. Again, it's a D variance. The applicant should demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area ratio. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you.
Please, continue.
Hi, so my name is Vahab Narayan, I'm a...
The applicant?
The applicant.
And we'll swear you in, sir, if you would raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it will be.
Thank you.
And my name is Joseph Kleimer. I am the contractor on the renovation.
Mr. Kleimer, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
All right.
So I just, I guess I just want to, you know, orient everybody about what we're proposing to do. So when you enter our house, there's currently an existing porch, which is covered from the top, and then you go into this relatively narrow vestibule, which is covered on both sides, and, and also on, on, on the top, and of course, then you go to our front door. So it's covered from all sides except, you know, the front. And, and, and then you step into our living room, and there's sort of, we have sitting area right, right almost next to the door. And so what we're proposing is that we enclose this vestibule by moving the front, front door to the front of the vestibule. Essentially, what that does is that, you know, every time somebody opens the front door, we don't have, you know, cold air rushing into where we sit, and it creates a little bit of a landing space. From my perspective, it, it really does not alter the, the look of the house at all from, from any side. It'll almost be impervious to, to anybody looking at the house. And, and just, you know, thirty-three square feet is just enough for somebody to hang their coat and, 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 and create a little bit of a buffer between, between the, between the living area and, 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 and the front door. As was mentioned, right, you know, we, we are at variance, we are applying for a variance, but, you know, we haven't made any changes to the house thus far that require a variance. When we bought the house, apparently, it was in compliance, and then there were some changes to the ordinance, and, and it was no longer in compliance, but we were not, you know, so that, I guess, was nothing that we did. But in any case, that's, that's what we are proposing to do, and if there's anything you want to add.
Yeah, so some of the logistics of the renovation, the existing roof is all remaining, the existing four columns on the front porch is all remaining. What we are simply doing is removing the existing front door, the side lights. That is now going to be a jammed doorway going into the existing house. The front door is now going to be flush with the existing framed-out bay windows in the front. So instead of having the front door extend into the existing footprint, it's just going to be flat in the front. So we're not expanding any of the footprint, we're not altering the structure, we're just essentially building a wall and a floor. We're running HVAC into the room, one register tied into the existing vent, running standard lighting, receptacles, and all that will meet current code compliance, and all that will be run through the building department once we get to that point.
Are you reusing the existing front door, the whole entry system?
The existing front door is going to be reused. The door itself is not in bad shape, so we believe that we can move that up. Everything else is going to be new for the structure.
You're gonna have a new, are you gonna have a glass light above the door?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay, is that it?
That was it.
That's it, okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this application? Okay, seeing none. So you're done, right?
We're done.
Okay.
We did enjoy the two-hour testimony, though.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any comments? I, for one, think this is a reasonable request, so I have no, I have no objection to it. Somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Perron Lambros?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, our next case will be fifty-six Mercer Street, Z nineteen nineteen dash seven sixty-three, block eleven five oh one, lot one, zone E four. Other notices in order?
The noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. Derek, can you read your memo?
Okay. Application by the Princeton Theological Seminary is made, it's a minor site plan with a use variance, which is a D one. It's a conversion of an existing single-family house to a joint occupancy building containing approximately eleven hundred square feet of educational office space on the first floor. Subject property is located in a, is a single-family dwelling located to the east of Alexander Hall on the Princeton Theological Seminary campus. The campus contains eighteen point three-three acres, and it features a variety of buildings, administration buildings, dormitories, and chapels. Existing site is fully developed. The applicant is proposing to convert eleven hundred square feet of the first floor of the single-family dwelling to an office use. The existing house has eight bedrooms, kitchen, three and a half baths, living room, study, dining room, reception, laundry, and that eleven hundred square feet will take place in the front portion of the dwelling, which is currently occupied by a living room and a reception room, and will be converted to an office and a conference room. Although this is a site plan, it's a technical site plan in nature, and there are no external improvements of any sort, no site work is done, there's no impervious work proposed. It's all interior, it's a change of use. In joint occupancy buildings, a combination of a residence and an office are not permitted in the E four zone. It was looked at by the Historic Preservation Review Committee, it's in the Historic Preservation Zone, the Mercer Hill Zone. They said that the, since it does not alter any features of the building or the appearance of the existing building's exterior grounds, they did not have any further review. So that's a synopsis of the zoning report and the issues. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Does this have any parking issues related to it?
Now, there's enough parking on-site for this to be absorbed. I mean, I guess the space would take one or two spaces, but they have a parking garage on-site, and they have like a campus system, so we think that it would be absorbed into the system. There's, there's not a variance. In fact, there are seven hundred and eleven spaces provided by the seminary for a demand of four hundred and eighty people. So there's sufficient capacity on, on the, the seminary grounds to accommodate the parking.
Just a question, is this, is this office space going to be used just for administrative purposes? What, what's it gonna be used for?
Well, I'll have Herman Martinez testify to that. Generally, though, the idea is whereas there's one unit, family living there now, that the person living in the upper apartment will work there with two new employees on a new program that the seminary is working for, an international program that they'll be doing.
Okay.
So with, with that, thank you again for, for staying up with us tonight. Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee. We'll have one exhibit again tonight with, I think, six slides on PowerPoint to step you through this. As Mr. Bridger said, the change of use triggers a site plan review, so we're asking for that, even though, as he said, we're looking to change nothing. The, it's in a historic district, but again, we're not looking to change the outside of this building at all. It is only the one portion of it will be converted from the residential use to this joint use for use of one of the, the employees that lives upstairs. In all of the, the E-zone uses, that's not permitted. I, I was surprised by that, but it's, it's the case, and we went through the seminary's campus, and there really aren't other examples of this, which, as a kind of outside person, surprised me. I think a lot of mixed use in the education situation, you know, that one lot does have multiple uses on it, but in the same buildings, that's just not the case under, under the code. Tonight, two quick witnesses, our architect and the head of facilities for the seminary. I'll, I'll first introduce Herman Martinez to, to, to talk about what the seminary's gonna be doing there, you know, the, the concerns about the number of employees and that type of thing, and then the architect to step us through what, what's physically changing. So with that, if we could have Ms. Martinez sworn in?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Herman. If you could just very quickly, I know you've testified many times here in Princeton, various boards, but just let the board know what, what your role is at the seminary?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Herman Martinez, I'm Director of Facilities and Construction at Princeton Theological Seminary, and as Ryan has said, yes, I have testified previously. I've been employed for the seminary for four, four decades.
All right. So I've got slide two here. Outlined in blue is the lot, the, that the campus is on and this property. Could you kind of point out to the board where, what part of the campus we're talking about, and how it relates to the, the streets that we're looking at?
Okay, fifty-eight Mercer Street, also known as Alexander House, which is one of the oldest homes that the seminary owns. The original structure was, was completed in eighteen nineteen. It sits adjacent to Alexander Hall, which is our first building, completed in eighteen twelve. If you look at the slide, it's the pin drop up there. It, it faces Mercer Street, set back even with Alexander Hall.
I'll also point out, so the, the way the lot lines work, the blue is the outline of the tax lot, but if I were to circle in these properties in red, even though they're not in that lot, are those also owned by the seminary?
Yes, that entire section is owned by seminary for faculty housing.
This next slide is the zoning map. You can see here where the E four and the other E zones intersect, and then the, I'm just gonna circle here, if you could just confirm these, in the R three zone, those are, that's other housing for the seminary?
Yes.
Maybe walk the board here.
That's an overhead view of fifty-eight Mercer Alexander House. You can see it's a quite, quite a large home. It is one of our premier homes on, on campus.
And, and currently, where does the occupant, where would they park?
They would park, where the pin drop is, to the left of that, there's a small parking area, enough for three spaces, right, right adjacent to our campus roadways.
And would that change?
No, that, that remains the same.
All right. This next slide here is a markup of the survey. Is that the, this is the house fifty-eight Mercer outlined in blue?
Yes, yes, it is.
And the other lots, again, are, are owned by the seminary up to the, the next street?
Yes.
All right, this next slide, I believe, is a, a map of campus?
Yes, our existing campus, yes.
All right. Very briefly, if you could first take the, the board through what the seminary's plan is with the eleven hundred square feet on the first floor, what, what it'll be used for, how many people would be working there, and then the people that work there, how they would get there and where they'd park?
Certainly. So in, in June of this year, the seminary has partnered with the Overseas Ministries Study Center, formerly located, or presently located in, in New Haven, Connecticut. It's a small program that, that has the same mission as the seminary. So there's a two-year MOU, and eventually, they will become part of the seminary within that two-year period. Executive Director Tom Hastings and his family will be living at fifty-eight Mercer Street and would like to work from the front two rooms on the first floor. I believe you have plans in front of you. There are just two large rooms, a library and a living room, I guess you could call it, and with two employees that would assist Tom with his work, work duties related to the ministry center.
Going back to the map here, the, the two employees, I guess they would park where the rest of faculty or staff on, on campus park. So how, where would they, where would they park to get there?
They would, they would park at the library lot, right across Mercer Street, next to Building L up there, yes, right there. There, there, there is sufficient parking there, and they walk right across the street to fifty-eight Mercer Street.
All right. Are there any changes to how campus circulation would, would work as part of the new program?
Not at all. And any guests or, or visitors would also park in the library lot and be directed to fifty-eight Mercer Street.
Do you expect that there would be classes taught in the, the building?
It, it's not classes, it, it's more meeting space and, and creating, creating this program for, for missionaries overseas and partnering with the seminary, with, with faculty. There are three faculty in the seminary that'll be closely adjoined with, with...
So there's a two-year MOU, and eventually they will become part of the seminary within that two-year period. Executive Director Tom Hastings and his family will be living at 58 Mercer Street and would like to work from the front two rooms on the first floor. I believe you have plans in front of you. They're just two large rooms, a library and a living room, I guess you could call it, and with two employees that would assist Tom with his work duties related to the ministry center.
Going back to the map here, the two employees, I guess they would park where the rest of faculty or staff on campus parks. So how, where would they, where would they park to get there?
They would park at the library lot, right across Mercer Street, next to Building L up there. Yes, right there. There is sufficient parking there, and they walk right across the street to 58 Mercer Street.
Are there any changes to how campus circulation would work as part of the new program?
Not at all. Any guests or visitors would also park in the library lot and be directed to 58 Mercer Street.
Do you expect that there would be classes taught in the building?
It's not classes. It's more meeting space and creating this program for missionaries overseas and partnering with the seminary, with faculty. There are three faculty in the seminary that'll be closely adjoined with this program, Afe Adagami, Ramundo Barreto, and Richard Fox Young, who presently all live on campus.
Great. And finally, as far as maintenance or trash pickup, does anything change about how you would handle this building?
Not at all. It's a former residence for faculty. Actually, it's been a faculty residence for almost 200 years.
And moving to the next side, these are some front and overhead views of the building?
Yes, and the front view is a very recent picture, actually, from yesterday. That's how it is.
Thank you. Before we get to our architect, does anyone on the board have questions about what the proposed use would be?
The only question I have is, I guess would be an architectural question. Is there a code issue with separation of a business use from a residential use?
Sure. We can have Jeff answer that. So before we repeat that question and have you testify, if we could have architects sworn in?
Sure. Could you state your name for the record, sir?
Jeffrey Fleischer.
And if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
And Jeff, you're a licensed architect in St. Louis, Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And have you testified before boards like this in the past?
Yes, throughout New Jersey and in front of this board in the past.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you hear the chairman's question about code uses or changes that might be impacted here?
Yes. Because of the occupant load and the fact that we're only going to have three people in the office, there's no need for a fire separation between the two uses, the residential use and the business use.
Okay. I wasn't sure it was based on occupant load, especially, I thought it was based on use, but that's fine. But there'll be no, you don't have to make any interior modifications other than adding a few doors in there to create the separation?
Correct.
So there'll be no interior or exterior changes?
There will not be any exterior changes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Just looking at the plans, it looks like the kitchens are different. Is there going to be a remodel of the kitchen area?
Yes, as part of the new residents requested that they renovate the kitchen.
So Jeff, why don't you maybe take them through very briefly what small interior changes are happening as this, you know, the inside is rehabbed, I guess, for the new occupant?
Right, we're just dividing one of the front rooms into two spaces, one a private office and another shared office space. We're renovating the door to the existing powder room on the first floor to accommodate the office users. We're also converting a closet into a kitchenette area for the office use, and then we're renovating the kitchen, and on the second floor, we're renovating some bathrooms for the residents.
So the office occupants, how would they enter? They would enter through the right side here?
Yes, through the front, the existing front door.
And the, you know, other than the perhaps director of the program who would be working and living there, how would the residents and their family enter the building?
Through the back door that's adjacent to the parking.
Okay. On this next slide, I believe these are other floors?
Yeah, that's all the resident space, bedrooms, bathrooms.
Is anything changing with those?
Just some minor renovations, cosmetic.
Okay. Then, want to have any other questions for the architect?
Can you go back a couple of slides to that one? So the room at the bottom of the purple is not part of the office space, or is?
It is. That would be the meeting space.
Meeting space. I'm sorry, I can't read it.
The purple is meant to show the 1,100 square foot that will be repurposed for the office use. On the left, it's the existing layout, but with that square foot shaded. On the right, it's the new slightly revised layout with that same square foot shaded.
And is it really an eight-bedroom house?
Yes, yes.
Yes, it is.
Has it ever been occupied with eight?
No.
It's a beautiful home.
Four and five, not eight.
And can I ask you one more question? Derek, why are we looking at this?
Because joint occupancy uses are not a permitted use in the E1 zone, and joint occupancy is the combination of a residential component and a business or office component, and it's not a permitted use. So it's a technical use, it's a D1 variance that requires five affirmative votes.
Is there precedent for this?
Nah, I mean, there's been other similar cases in the borough where, nothing like this on a campus that I remember, but...
Is there any reason to be concerned about this, that this is something that the seminary is going to do with all their houses?
Well, I mean, you could deny that if that became the issue, but I mean, you have to look at it, kind of balance the negatives and the positives and the scale of what they're proposing, and the testimony they provided is for one professor and his...
If I could comment to that? I've been at the seminary a very long time, and because this is a new program, this is a new venture for us also. I can tell you that we value our faculty homes. We take, try to take very good care of them. They're all single-family, and our plan is for them to remain that way. This being a new program is, and it's a large home, as you can see, that would be able to accommodate this need.
Plus the occupants who live there will be working there too.
Yes.
Derek, can you kind of, is there a brief way to say what the worry is or why this was put in place? What?
I'm not really sure why it was put in place. Offices are permitted uses on the campus. I guess maybe on a college, you would want dormitories separate from office use, and I don't have a better answer for you, sorry.
Any other comments? Personally, I don't see any negative aspects to this on the neighborhood, the seminary or the community.
We certainly don't either. We also, we have a planner here tonight, and I don't want to have her speak for too long, but you know, this is technically a D-variance, and we were...
Then I think you, for the record, I think you should...
We'll have her say just a few words, just to make sure.
Yeah, I would say that's appropriate.
Absolutely. You're all familiar with Elizabeth McManus?
Hello.
Hello again.
I believe still sworn in from before if we... All right. Okay. Thank you, Beth.
I have lots of testimony planned.
We'll keep it under three hours. We probably, no.
I will try.
If you could very quickly just take us through the positive and negative and just what we need to show for the use variance and why this is, I don't mean to say not a big deal, but why that fits in the categories.
Yeah, sure. So of course, we've got the D1 variances, was explained. Essentially, we have two uses that are being proposed. One is a residence, one is office. Both of these individual uses are permitted in the E4 district. The variance we need is just simply to put them together. And so to do that, I've got to talk to you guys about the positive and negative criteria. So with that, let me start with the positive criteria. The first question to be asked and answered by all of you is, what makes this particular site particularly suited for the proposed use? And I've got a handful of reasons why I think that this makes sense. The first is, like I said, we're in a location where we actually have two of the, the two individual uses are permitted, but just not together. And so we've got, we're in a location where the character or the activity in the area is consistent with the proposal, the individual uses. But more specific to this particular property is...
A map?
Yeah, the map. Actually, that's perfect. So we are in a transitional area for the Theological Seminary. So if you look at this map up here, we are in Building 58. It's that little gray building next to the blue arrow. And I wanted to use this map because it includes some of the uses for the surrounding buildings. So like I said, we are office and we are residential, and if you look at the uses on either side, we are surrounded by office uses and residential uses. So to the, to the east of the site, generally along Alexander, we have those existing residential uses for use by the Princeton Theological Seminary staff, and then to the west-ish along Mercer Street, and actually behind as well, we have a mix of more traditional educational uses, including office uses. So there is a mix of dorms, additional quasi-residential uses, but we also have some office uses identified for some of these surrounding buildings. So like I said, on one side, we have residential uses, and on the other side, we have, well, actually additional residential uses, but also some of these office uses. So we are literally in the middle of these individual uses. Additionally, the house itself is really well-suited, particularly suited, to the proposed use. Like we heard, this is, this is really quite a large home. It's got eight bedrooms, and so today's modern families really don't have a need for eight bedrooms, particularly with small, excuse me, shrinking household sizes and so forth. So it really makes sense to try to repurpose some of this space that can't typically be used by the average family here in Princeton. And so for that handful of reasons, I think that the site is particularly suited to the proposed mix of office and residential uses, and that's, that's part of the positive criteria. The other part is to expand the discussion a little bit, to talk about what other purposes of the municipal land use law are advanced by the application. So while our particular suitability advances Purpose A, which is to, generally speaking, to promote the general welfare of the community, there are a couple additional purposes that I think are supported. So the first one is Purpose E, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will, that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. I cite that because, again, I think this is a good location, a transitional location for residential use, and not just many residential uses, but literally just one, and so we're right squarely in that transitional area. I also think we promote Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential and including commercial uses as well. So again, this is a location where we've got that transitional, transition uses between residential and office uses, those two very uses that are proposed in, at this one home at 58 Mercer. And so with that, that's our positive criteria. Our particular suitability because of the location, the home, and the individual uses being permitted in the zone, and then our purposes of the MLWL, which are A for the general welfare, E and G. But alas, we're not done. Got to talk to you guys about the negative criteria, and so we have a few components of that to address. The first one is whether or not the proposal will create any substantial detriment to the public good, and I would argue that the answer is no. There will not be any substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, I don't think there's going to be any visibility to the public, any change in site activity as a result of converting a portion of this space from, from a large office to, excuse me, a large home, to an office that would host an additional two, three employees total, two that are not living on the site. And so because of that, we're not going to have any visual impact change. We've heard that there's going to be zero changes to the building or the site, and there's not going to be any increase in activity. This mix of uses is not going to create a flurry of activity on this area of Mercer Street in a way that doesn't already exist, because again, we're just talking about a total of three employees, really two more than are otherwise on the property. And then additionally, in terms of negative criteria, the question is whether or not the proposal creates a substantial detriment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And for that too, I think the answer is clearly no. For one, we have the individual uses already being permitted in the district, so we know office and we know residential are appropriate for this area of Princeton. It's just simply putting them together that causes us to make this application before all of you tonight. Additionally, there are a couple of items in your master plan that are supportive of what we're asking for. So I'm looking to your reexamination report, and in here, it talks about, for example, some of the primary goals, many of these that are helpful. The first one is to ensure a proper balance between new residential developments, non-residential development, and then affordable housing and preservation of open space. There's of course no impact on affordable housing. Terms of preservation of open space, there's really no impact on that either. We're not eating up any open space as a result of creating the additional office space, and I think we're continuing to maintain that balance here by creating two uses in a building that's really well-suited for the two of them. Additionally, there is another goal to protect the natural environment. I don't think we have any impact on the natural environment through this. Preserving historic sites is an additional goal. While we're not actively creating a new preservation or upgrading the facade in any way, but we're also maintaining the existing building exactly how it is, and as we heard in some of the opening remarks this evening, the Historic Preservation Commission declined to offer comments as to the proposed change of use or any improvements that they might seek in the building. There's also an overall goal of maintaining, the last goal I want to reference is maintaining the character of the neighborhood. So while we're not in a neighborhood per se, because we're in the middle of an educational district, I think this really speaks to trying to maintain the larger character of the area and not disrupting the, really the historic beauty of the area whatsoever. In addition, there are a few policies in the reexamination report that are helpful. One of them does talk about an update to the long-range plans of Princeton Theological Seminary. It should be completed prior to any major expansions. I think it's pretty clear this is not a major expansion to the seminary, just simply a small change to an existing building. Lastly, there are a couple housing goals that talk about balancing preservation goals with competing availability, excuse me, competing priorities, such as increasing the availability of moderate-income housing and also limiting the volume and bulk of certain buildings. So we're modestly related to these housing goals because this is really university housing, but I think the things that we can take away from this is the fact that we've tried to balance the goals of maintaining this existing building, maintaining the historic character of the building, while also being able to accommodate the seminary's expansion requests and doing so in a way that is really well-suited to this existing building, one might say, particularly suited to the existing building. And then last, but not least, is the reconciliation of the variances, essentially asking, why is it that this particular use, this mix of uses specifically, is not already included in your master plan, not already included in your zoning ordinance? And it's, I think it's a pretty unique use. I mean, we're seeing more and more mixed use around the state in a variety of contexts, but on a university campus, mixing a residential use with an office use is still pretty unusual. You see dormitories and classrooms mixed with offices, but the concept of an individual residence mixed with an office is a little bit, is a bit unique. I wouldn't expect to see that in any particular municipal master plan that has a college or university in it. So I tried to give some very brief testimony, but I think that's your positive, negative, positive criteria, your negative criteria, including the reconciliation of the master plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think, I think the number of people here devoted to the business use is minimal, but it is directly across the street are all single-family homes, not associated with the seminary.
Down Mercer?
Across Alexander.
Oh, yes, on the other side of Alexander. But one of the things, but I don't think that they're going to have visibility of, yeah, of this, of the building. They may see a filtered view through the, through the seminary's homes along...
Yeah, no, it's not, you're right. That's not going to, not going to have any effect. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. If there's any other questions for any of our witnesses, that's our testimony tonight.
Anyone have any questions?
Sure. Question, and this is maybe for Mr. Bridger. Is there a distinction between office use and general commercial use?
Yeah, there's many distinctions between retail, service, business, so, does that answer your question?
So proving this is office use doesn't mean that they could open a pizza joint?
No, I mean, you've heard testimony, specific office use to a resident of that house, I think it's a pretty narrow, you know, opening into the non-conforming uses here, so it's specific. That's a good question then.
I move, will you approve it? I think we want to hear from the public. And I don't know if there's anybody here in the public in... And I don't know if there's anybody here in the public, in the audience, who'd like to speak to this? No? Okay. Let's go.
Should I do it again?
I have one question because I was just reading up on how many parking spaces for, you know, a meeting room. And I, I'm not, I didn't, how big is that meeting room? Is it likely that you would pack it with 100 people, or is that possible? I didn't look at the dimensions of it. On the lower room there...
Size of the meeting rooms and how many people you really have in there?
10 to 12 maximum.
Okay. Doesn't sound like a problem.
How many square feet is it? Do you just roughly?
Is it on there?
The square feet of the office, square footage of the proposed office space?
The entirety of it is 1,100.
Yeah, so even from a code standpoint, it would only be 11 people by code.
And, and, you know, as the, whether you look at it that way, or if you look at the E-zone, there's a, probably is a letter in your packet explaining the traffic, I'm sorry, traffic, but the parking study that's done, it's on a per-employee for the entire university or the entire academic. So there's a considerable excess, I guess, of parking if you look at it from the code perspective.
Just, I have, looking at the plan, I just have one question. The half bath, the one half bath that separates the, it's in, it's on the office side, that is the bathroom, the lone bathroom for this space? Yeah, which is, for 11 people is probably fine.
The one that I circled there, that...
Yes, yes. Well, it looks like it's a little kitchen area and a bathroom, but that's it for the...
Well, it's, so it is, but remember, it's, while there may possibly be, if they had a large meeting with outside people, 10 people there that could physically fit, it's really just the two.
It's not, it's not a problem. I just want to make, okay, that was, all right. Any other comments? Are you, are you done?
Yes, that's all we have. Thank you.
Somebody like to comment or make a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Perron-Lambros?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next case is Z, Z 1919 dash 761, 884 Princeton Kingston Road, block 4703, lot 34 in the R5 zone.
All the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application tonight.
Thank you. VJ Catharetti is the owner and applicant for 884 Princeton Kingston Road. They're seeking a C1 variance to permit the development of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. Subject lot is smaller than the required lot area. They're also seeking a C2 variance to permit an exception to the required height-to-setback ratio on the two side yards. Subject property is located in the R5 zone in the former Princeton Township, subject to the use in bulk regs in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246. The subject lot is non-complying with respect to the required 21,780 square foot lot area. The existing lot is 20,900 square feet. The existing single-family dwelling will be substantially demolished and a new structure will be constructed, constructed, excuse me. The applicant should address whether they have contacted any adjoining property owners and offered to either sell the subject property to them or inquire if there was land available to cure the deficiency in lot area. The proposed new dwelling complies with all the bulk requirements, and it's a single-family house with a flat that complies with the township's flat ordinance, complies with all the parking requirements. The variances are for lot area. The requirement again is 21,780 square feet, the existing and the proposed are 20,900 square feet. And the setback to height ratio on the left, the requirement's 1 to 1, and the proposed is 1 to 1.28. And then on the right side, the same setback to height variance, the requirement's 1 to 1, and the proposed is 1 to 1.38. And he's requested a C1 hardship variance and, as well as a C2 flexible C. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them. Thank you. Sure. There's, it's a single-family house with a flat, an apartment. And I was just mentioning that because it does comply with the township's ordinance.
Mr. Catharetti, if you would raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have my architect also, James McKnight, here.
Sure. Sir, could you state your name for the record?
James McKnight.
And Mr. McKnight, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
All right, and do you swear from the testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe you should address the neighbors first.
Okay, first of all, thank you to the board for hearing us chat. And thank you, Mr. Richard, and Claudia, and entire zoning staff for helping us to, like, finish the forms and everything. And my name is Vijay Catharetti. I currently live at 884 Princeton Kingston Road with my wife and two daughters. One is like six years old, who is going to Little Brook School, and second one is going to daycare. And we are, I mean, we are seeking the like C1, C2 variance for lot area variance. And second one is for the left, side yard setbacks, left and right.
I brought some photographs of the existing house that weren't part of the application, if you want. Marking for evidence.
Did you want to speak at the exhibit?
Yeah, thank you.
Sir, did you take those photographs?
No, my associate did.
All right, but under your supervision. All right, so we'll call that Exhibit A1. And those are photographs of the existing house.
Let me just run through, this is the existing house, as you can see in the photographs. And basically, what we want to do is put a whole second story on it and an additional roof. It's a very pleasant lot across the street from the lake. So it's, you know, it's a very nice place to live. As VJ said, his family, two daughters and his wife and himself are going to live in the place. And the second page, Z2, shows the floor plans of the expanded house. The shaded area is a little duplex apartment that's on the northwest corner of the main Basically, the first variance is just that we have an undersized lot. It's 0.48 acres as opposed to five, I mean, a half of an acre. And the second variance is the setback requirements, which, I'm sorry, setback. Oh, yeah, so, I'm sorry. Over here on the left and the right, that vector that's going up at an angle, these little triangles of the roof are what's causing that second variance. So that's basically the...
Could you point that out again?
On Z3, way over on the right side, you'll see just the two side views of the house. And the setback, given the height of the structure and the existing side yard, the piece of the triangle that's cut off by that vector is the part of the roof that's creating those side yard setback variances.
And are you demolishing the house?
Not entirely. We're going to alter it substantially and add to it, but we're not going to demolish the house. We're using existing foundations, the whole existing first floor. This is the front of the building and this is the rear of the building. And that's a view from across the street.
Is there a parking or, how to say, an apartment?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. There's three required parking spaces, and they have two in the garage, and they can accommodate one in the driveway, or there's a small spot in the front yard that works as well.
Is there anything that prevented you from altering the roof line on the ends to bring it into conformance with the height-to-setback ratio?
No. And actually, I don't think it's a bad idea to, to, you know, chamfer off those two corners with a little hip on both ends.
That would at least, I mean, is, you're, it looks like on your, on your sheet Z3, it looks like you could easily do that and then bring it into conformance and eliminate the necessity for the height-to-setback, the two height-to-setback variances.
Yes, you're correct. Here's a, here's a wall-up of both sides put together that we were discussing before. But we could chamfer up, just make hips, because that's just an attic. Wouldn't affect the usable space.
But actually, I mean, can I speak? Aesthetically, I mean, it's not looking that good, like if we cut off those. So that is a reason, like, we are seeking the C2.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you. Excuse me.
Need to speak more directly into the mic, yeah?
I mean, if we have the hip roof, aesthetically, it is not looking that good. So that is a reason, like, we're looking for the C2 variance. And this property is like nice because it's the Carnegie Lake views and everything.
Okay.
And that's, that's not what, you know, we're not going to go with that hip roof. It would just be lopping off these two.
It would just be the second floor in the main portion of the house.
Yeah.
It's just, again, if you look at, like I said, look at sheet Z3 and look at the right side and left side, the two, the two drawing, the two elevations on the right side of the sheet show the line of the height-to-setback line. And you can see that if you just alter the roof, then you can bring it into conformance and eliminate the need for the variances.
Okay.
And it would probably, quite frankly, it might soften the end of the house. I mean, that's your call, but...
No, I think you're right.
Mr. McKnight, can you address, let me rephrase that. Is this house surrounded by fully-developed properties?
Look on Z1. You know, there's, there's three non-conforming lots surrounding this property, you know, because of the way this road comes off the main road. So, yeah, there's, there's all developed houses next to that.
All right, and your testimony is they're non-conforming, so they're not in a position to give land to this property without increasing their non-conforming.
Correct.
Okay.
So is the, do you agree with the idea of modifying the roof?
Yes, I think, as you suggested, chamfering off the two corners of the main elevation will eliminate that second variance and add to the appeal of the house, I believe.
Do you have any objection to that?
I'll go with my architect.
Always agree with your architect.
Thank you.
Okay. Derek, would it be necessary for them to come back before us?
I mean, I think they...
Was that something you can look at?
If you make a condition that it comply with the height-to-setback, the roof design should be changed to reflect a hip roof that...
And you can review that?
Yes, sir.
Anybody? Any comments related to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add before we open it up to the public? Okay, so obviously, there's no one out there, so I guess let's discuss it and make a motion?
So it's just the, it's just the lot size? It's just a lot size variance now we're looking at because we've resolved the setback.
So now it's just, yeah, just a lot size variance? And you'll modify the, modify the roof line to conform to the height-to-setback ratio?
Yes, sir.
And that will be reviewed by our zoning officer? So we're only approving one variance?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Somebody want to make a motion on that? Or did you just make a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, second on that? Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Ms. Perron-Lambros?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Got a lot done.